Recording in progress.
Go ahead and call this meeting to order, the RMLD Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we call the cab meeting to orders.
Um, so the Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. The role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion and uh just reminder, we're recording this and it's uh held remotely unseen. We're streaming on our CTV. Any public comment?
No.
Unseen. Okay, great. Um town liaisons, any updates? From you, want to be the board?
Um, yeah, I I don't have a lot. Um, there was some discussion, I think in the the recalc, the senior center construction about whether because someone heard something about rebates related to energy that whether that they should go forward with ground source heat pump. So there's still not good connectivity between that team and us because it's we're the one providing that support to uh electrical and if someone's getting something from another source. So um we should encourage RMLD to strengthen their that connection and make sure we're in touch with the engineering team on on that project that they don't get misinformation.
There. I didn't we want to get to Paul and who's who needs to engage with that?
Um. So I think it's been Megan's not here. She or she's in the building, but not in the room. Um Megan Wu is probably the planning team is probably the the team that would interface with the
So this is the engineering department for this?
So so there are two major construction projects in Reading, uh a Reading Elementary School and then a Reading Senior Center, and they're both in a close geographic area. Um, and we've had various people mainly from the IR IRD team present at the planning meetings, supporting energy, solar and and whatever utility support. And then that vote has passed the town meeting or or town election. So those projects are going forward. And they've moved into an engineering phase within the town.
Okay.
And so there's an engineering team that's doing the the plan development and get ready for bid package and all that. And the course of doing that, they've sort of narrowed their their input to just the engineering team. Some of the other people who had been like me, who had been involved in communicating with the the planning and the engine engineering teams, uh the design team. Early on, they kind of narrowed it down to try to not have too many voices, but I think they're not getting enough voices right now and and hearing things and not getting um the right guidance from us. So um probably someone from Megan's team should oh, uh Karen. Uh recalc, um we should support recalc and and uh give them the right information about what power requirements and support they need. Karen is on the Board of Selectmen, so I haul it out to Karen, but it would be Megan's team who should have a resource person there.
Would she have a contact name and info, Megan?
Yeah, uh Erica's shaking her head. Yes, Erica knows all. So um she she uh
I'm in my three days.
Yes.
I have found that out.
Yeah. Yes. Just ask Siri, just ask Erica and Erica's listening right.
There you go.
Great. We'll take that forward.
Sure. That's that's all I have this right now. Yeah.
Um Karen, did you hear any anything from a liaison perspective?
Um, oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank the Board of Commissioners and new interim GM and uh
two previous GMs. I don't know if this is on. We're Reading is a a the first green community in your territory. Couldn't have done it without you. It was a five year process. Lots of support with lots of people in this room. So thank you. We're exciting. We're excited about what we're going to be able to do. And we're also excited about partnering with you moving forward with the two building projects we have going on. Thank you.
Okay, um let's do some committee updates next. I think we have uh two. We have the um GM search committee and then we have the uh GM contract committee through the new search committee. Think first.
You you want to take it? Uh Vivek? Okay, um we we continue forward um with reviewing uh applications and that's the step that we are at at this moment. Oh, the small ad. I want to thank the uh Lyman and the grid team for meeting me this morning. We had a good discussion. Uh, I want to thank Patty for summarizing those notes of the discussion. It's a good summary and and we'll discuss those within our uh our team in terms of the feedback, but very good discussion. Um, and I think I want to thank the people that showed up to to uh
Yeah, no, the only comment I that that is like what we're doing is as part of our process talking to different groups within the within RMLD and we even had a management discussion this now. So and so thank you. Uh, Patty's not here. Um, we we've got at least, I think, four groups done and Bob's the next one to finish up.
Great. Thank you. Um, contract, Meg?
Yep. Thanks, Madam Chair, and welcome, Paul. It's great to have you here.
It's great to be here.
Know Paul for several years and it's a really, really sharp guy and uh really happy to have you here. So thank you.
Glad to be here also.
And also to the Chair and and Council for getting things done very quickly in a few days. I know it was a lot.
It was a whirlwind.
It was a lot. Yeah. So I'm I'm speaking right now for this uh Rich Swanson, who's not here, is the other Commissioner. We have a two-person committee, which I understand maybe the cab wants to add a add a person just to kind of look, uh get an advanced look on the future GM contract and see what things might we want to talk about for that. And um as part of that, you know, last, it was last Thursday night when we got your contract, Paul, your offer letter and contract, and then, of course, we had an emergency meeting. And after that, I noticed that some language that had been has been in the GM contracts for twelve or more years wasn't in there defining the role and it was boilerplate language. And I did ask Chris about, hey, what happened with this? And he said, yeah, it wasn't, it seemed like his takeaway was it wasn't not inadvertent and that it wouldn't be controversial to can you put it back up? Uh, because Rich and I took a vote today just to show you what it is. Very, very small thing, but this language here has has been in the GM contract for the last two cycles. That additional red has been in the contract of what is the governing framework for the GM role? You know, where consistent applicable provisions of the Charter and and RMLD policies. So you know, the feedback was, well, we did this already. Paul signed it, understood. It would be, why do we want to reopen it? And don't necessarily want to reopen it, but in talking to Rich at today's meeting, our contract meeting, which was this afternoon, we thought we'd at least put it forward to say, you know, if if the GM was willing and if you're not, it's fine. We just say this is, it would be our recommendation and we took a vote two oh um to say that as part of the ratification and the the um the agenda item says negotiate terms with with Paul Heaton U S applicable, that there's a small opening to say, hey, would you be willing to just have this language be in there that's been in there for twelve years? And I can understand if you'd say, man, we're done. No, which case I would accept that. But we took a vote recommending to the full board that if the GM was willing that to include this because it's been in there for twelve years. So that's that's the gist of what we did today, this afternoon. So that's that was our recommendation to the full board.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, see, on on this point about the committee, there was some discussion. Last time we decided maybe the cab didn't want to have a representative. But uh as we have been having the discussions, Bob, uh I I think a lot of what's going to go into the contract is also going as there there's two efforts. There's a search committee that's developing certain criteria for the search and there's a contract being written. And so what I I'm kind of getting ahead of the motion, but yeah, the idea was that maybe if there was one person who was on both committees, both subcommittees, that person would have an idea as to what is being considered for the contract and can factor that into the thinking for the search. Okay? Or or if there was a process by which we could get information from the subcommittee, that that also serves the same purpose. And I'm 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 happy to join the subcommittee to do that.
Yeah, I just I thought we put I thought we volunteered Charlie last time.
I I I it it was a meeting Charlie was like, right?
Yeah, exactly. The look of law, right? But I I thought I thought we I thought we put Charlie on there.
I I think you left it. It was just
Okay.
Right or wrong, maybe wrong. It was the two of us. It would be good to have a cab member on if if so.
If we do three board members, then we
And you have a board.
Yeah, a forum. So you would have to uh
Yeah.
And you would you would be the overlapping cab member if if that's the role you're offering.
And would that create? I I don't think it creates a conflict in in any way, but so if if that's acceptable, uh Jason or I think we 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 could create a motion.
Send another voice to be heard.
So um if you go and could find the minutes that will say the language. So whatever the language for the cab last time to say, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
First, one was to nominate.
Yeah. So let's make a motion. Yeah.
Move that to the cab, so I'm going to the GM contract. Second. Favor.
I don't care. Vivek's on the eye. Yeah.
What part? Sorry to have missed you this afternoon.
That's fine.
Yeah, because this isn't something that we need to have a board motion on, is it?
Um, I do not believe so.
Correct.
As long as the Contract Committee is okay with every structure, it's perfectly fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Um, moving on. So Karen already shared the Green Communities Designation update, but uh just to recap, I have the honor of participating in the um ceremony last week, just to acknowledge that. Um, there, as Karen said, there was a lot of um uh commentary around how critical RMLD's support has been for this designation and how much effort has gone into it. So I will second turn thanks to the team um for supporting that and and moving forward. Um, we also, I also did use that as an opportunity to, you know, remind the folks who are interested about all of the different things they can do individually through RMLD's programs um to support kind of more sustainable um lower carbon uh community here. So um appreciate uh being able to participate in that and thanks again to the organization. Yep. And the only thing I didn't do a great job at was remembering to bring the plaque that is really lovely. Um, and we will uh display it prominently in our office here.
Nice lovely photo in that chronicle.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's it's good. Good for RMLD to get recognition. I think Karen's been the driving force. So it'd be good to at least recognize her.
Her her contributions are very well recognized as well. So yeah, thank you, Karen, for all of your efforts there. Important. Um, okay, so moving on to uh point seven, so discussion uh and the terms of the IGM agreement and um ideally ratification of that uh employment offer letter. Um, so I think you had you had proposed a potential
Yeah.
To this. Um, I will say, you know, there was conversation, as you mentioned with Chris on this. Um, the feedback was that it was not material. Uh, omission or would really not have much of an impact on it, but so either way, uh, you know, it's not significant change if it's in or out.
Um, I would propose, I would propose, um, the motion that I would propose is move to ratify the IGM's um contract and with this included language, subject to the willingness of the interim general manager. And and then if you're willing and you you have a conversation, then it goes in. And if you come back tomorrow and say no, then we've approved it without it because we've said subject to your willingness.
Bush, I think we got to prove it tonight.
Right, but that way it does approve it. And that 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 the addition is the only clause in there is that the addition of this is subject with with this addition, subject to his willingness to include it. So we have approved it. And if he agrees that the addition can go back in, then it goes. And if he doesn't, it doesn't. And that tells us what the lawyer's intent was. If it was it a mistake or was it deliberate? So that's what we're doing here. Yeah, that's pretty. I mean, I I disagree that it's immaterial. I mean, I know that the people who cut it out said it was immaterial, but or or who left it out said it was immaterial, but I I think these are, this is local control. We we exist because of the town charter. So
Not that it's the point of it being material is it does not change the actual implications by adding this contract. It does not change the role of the GM or the governing.
So you you don't want it in?
I I
You you don't want?
I'm just saying that if there is, if it is either way, it does not change the role of the GM.
Well, I I made I made a motion if somebody wants to second or not second it, but my motion is move to ratify the IGM's contract and that this clause shall be included, subject to the willingness of the IGM. And if not, then it will be ratified without the clause. That's my motion. So it's up to Paul tomorrow or the next day to say whether he wants the clause in or not. That's it. That's my motion. If somebody wants to second it or not, or just
We we have to ratify it tonight.
That is ratifying it. The only only the only subject is the clause.
Tonight.
No, he doesn't.
How can you ratify something if he
All right.
If he if he if he's if he's here tonight, we need to ratify it tonight.
Okay.
So you have to say if Paul agrees to it, he agrees to it tonight or
All right, we
Or we or we either include it or don't include it. That's that that's the first question. And then the second question is, you know, is it with or without? We ratify it with it or without? He says, yes, we ratify it with it. He says, no, thank you. Then we ratify it without it. Pretty, pretty.
I think either way, it's not appropriate to ask for him to make that decision tonight.
Thank you for that. Not doing that, not asking for it tonight.
So if
Do it again.
Sorry?
And we have to do it again.
But uh, so I think what Dave is saying is that he's proposing that his motion would be applicable in either situation depending on his his answer. I I don't know. Do we have? I don't know if we have a legal opinion on whether that's true or not, but um you know, the way that it's worded seems like it would ratify it either way.
That is certainly the intent of the motion and that's what I say. That's what I said to you before the meeting. And, you know, we only had our committee meeting today. Everything's been quick. Uh, we had from eleven P M to nine A M to the first time the the four members of the board saw the contract was eleven P M on Thursday night for an emergency meeting at nine A M. So I missed it. I'm
We were certainly in a position where we had to go quickly to ensure that we did not have a gap.
No, 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 no. Right, nobody's disputing that. It's just that that's why this is happening now. Yeah.
My point is that the the committee, the subcommittee is focused on the contract. It's also focused on the on the permanent GM contract. The scope not was not intended to be at this. We can certainly continue to discuss the the motion.
Right, well, just to clarify that, this will be a basis for whatever the next negotiation is. There's no way around that. If we have set a precedent that we're cutting this language out and we don't care, then that that says something to the next GM. That's all. But I've said my piece and I I don't want to clog the meeting up anymore.
Anyone second?
Uh, well, I'll second the motion um in with, as Dave presented, ratify the contract and include the phrase at the discretion of the the uh interim GM. Um, with the intent that it's ratified and the the language can be clarified. I I do understand, having been part of the Reading Town Charter discussion uh and we've as a board have been through some of the different policies uh and understand how policies affect the board's interaction with uh the GM and with with RMLD. So I understand where Dave's coming from. Um, I'm not sure that not having this phrase for the interim GM means anything about the permanent GM language, but um if I I would want to advance the process with a vote to ratify and the language can be optional.
Who's option?
Yours.
Your option.
It's yours. If you say no.
Yeah, no, yeah. No, 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 absolutely.
And we said it in the committee meeting too. I mean, the timetable has been what it's been. So, yeah, it's
Okay, the motion was seconded. Is there further discussion? So I think what we are voting for is can we can we just restate or write the motion just so we're very clear?
Yep. Uh, it's moved to approve the interim, ratify the interim general manager's contract. Uh, and that it the the contract shall include this additional phrase, which you can read into the motion, subject to the uh willingness of the IGM where he is not required to include it if he doesn't want to. We can include as many of restated as many times. Uh, that's what it is. So and I would, it's not, it should not be controversial. This has been too much discussion. It's been in the thing for twelve years. So that's all. It shouldn't be as controversial as it seems to be in the D S, but um
Anything to vote for the discussion? Right. All in favor?
Quarter eight.
Okay. Four zero. Um, okay, moving on to approval of meeting.
Moved that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approved the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager and the board secretary, July twenty-third and August thirteenth.
Sorry.
Uh, we have some discussion, but you guys want to have your motion first?
Uh, I think you
Okay, fine.
Should just ask.
Okay. The only thing I I reflected on the meeting minutes and I distinctly remember one stake that was made. Uh, I think it was by Mr. McIntyre. Was that he he said it's it is advisable for RMLD to stay at the same rate of OPEP and pension liability reduction as the town of Reading. Okay, that didn't come out in the notes. Okay, I read them. And I I think Erica, I think it's important because it's a message to us as, you know, to the board and to the cab that we should, that's something that we can watch out for. Because the way it was worded was not quite right. So so I think that that's why I I I can leave this with you. I I think it's
We'll hold back. I'll listen to the recording and then we'll revise it to make it.
Yeah, but it's I think it's important to capture that because it was clearly mentioned that we are doing better than the town and then the town and Karen, you had pointed out that, you know, town may actually slow down the way you deal with some of the payment, right? So I think what we have to do is make sure we track what the town of Reading is doing and not accelerate beyond that.
On topic of ratification, I I now that's okay behind us.
But No, no, I'm I'm on OPEP payment and pension liability. Yeah, no, and so so and we should not, we should not accelerate beyond what the town is doing.
Wow.
That 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 was the advice we got. And I at least I at least want to capture that.
So I think the what you're saying is we're, are we going to hold on approving which, sorry, which date was it?
This was the the July twenty-third minutes, page nine. Uh, yeah, page nine of the document, page nine of the document.
So why don't we hold on approving that one then until the revisions are made and then we'll bring it back for people?
Okay.
Whatever is easiest for you.
So um would revise the move up to be August thirteenth.
I I don't have comments on any others.
Move to move that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approved the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager and the board secretary for August thirteenth.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Hi.
So we'll hold off on the printing.
Somebody want to read?
All right.
Raise all the yell again. All right. Take care of it.
Thanks.
All right. Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approved the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager and the board secretary for August thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Okay, next topic is the E and E Board of Directors' appointment. Um, a reminder, we uh we are asked to do this for each of our um GMS or interim GMS in places of um uh we'll talk more about why that is um in a subsequent topic. Um, but the motion is, um, anybody want to read the motion for the director's appointment for Paul?
Great.
Can we read the motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, the pursuant to section three point two, the operating agreement of Energy New England LLC, uh, the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners hereby appoint Paul Hennew as Class B Director of the New England Energy New England LLC Board of Directors for a term of one year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Four zero. Okay, next topic. Uh, we have members of the E and E staff here to um share an update with us. Welcome. Thanks for joining.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Are you driving the bus, Eric, or am I?
Driving.
Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you very much for having us. Uh, been a while since we've been up here. Mentioned to Commissioner Talbot that the uh he was the only one here when RMLD came back to E and E in two thousand and nineteen. So um, a little bit of history, I think, is was what I'm going to to go through too. So everybody understands and we're able to ask, answer questions on that. And I might as well answer the first question that the Chair just talked about, which is why there's a Board of Director.
And I might as well answer the first question that the chair just talked about, which is why there's a Board of Director. Um, Board of Directors are from the six owners of E and E. So each owner has a board seat at E and E. We also have three outside directors that are from the industry. One happens to be a former D P U. Chair. One's a high-powered energy lobbyist, and one is an original board member. From nineteen ninety-eight, and Ray is still doing a real good job. He, um, he's involved in a lot of energy efficiency things, actually lives in New York and Pennsylvania. And has run some of the larger energy efficiency uh, companies throughout the country. So that's kind of the makeup of the board. So let me just go through, um, the organization was founded in nineteen ninety-eight. The original four owners were Braintree, Taunton, Redding, and C M A C., which is a joint action agency in Connecticut. So that was nineteen ninety-eight, formed as a shared services company, which meant that's when deregulation took over in Massachusetts. We were going to deregulate, the utilities had to sell off their generation and so on. Um, luckily, the chair of that committee back then was a gentleman named Mike Morrissey. Uh, who's been in the news lately. He's the Norfolk D A. now, but he was the, a Braintree Senator, kept the public power entities and the M L Ps. separate from that deregulation. Did, we didn't have to divest from anything back then. But starting with new markets, and everybody thought the energy market was going to be traded daily, hourly, and so on back in ninety-eight. Um, these four systems got together and said, we need to put some expertise in one place and share that knowledge around four people. Unfortunately, what happened is, and I'm sure some people may remember or not, uh, two thousand and four, there were some internal issues here at R M L D. R M L D. decided to leave E and E. at that time, in two thousand and four, because of the internal issues they had. So that left three owners. In two thousand and seven, um, the current owners asked Hingham, Wellesley, Concord, and Beaumont to join them. To add to the ownership. Three systems went in, Beaumont did not. Um, unfortunately, they had a G M. who was ready to do it, ended up leaving for family issues, going back to Dover, Delaware, I think the gentleman was from, so they never executed on it. So there are currently six owners, and they're listed up here. Braintree, Concord, Hingham, Redding, Taunton, Wellesley. The reason why the three are in red, those are original owners. If you go back, um, in two thousand and nineteen, I came up here and suggested that R M L D. get back in. They're a large system. They're one of the icons of public power, if you take a look at it. Um, certainly, um, Taunton, Braintree, and Redding are the larger of the systems, this side of four ninety-five. So the thought was, we, you know, come back in, be part of the board, be part of the organization, and the board voted in late two thousand and nineteen to come back in. Like I say, Commissioner Talbot, I think was the only one on this board now that was here at that time. So the organization really is um, a trusted advisor, and you look at the numbers that are up there, um, we are the largest organization like this in New England. You know, we have uh, twenty-seven customers. We also do, we just don't do, this, this is the other thing I want to make sure I get across. We don't just do municipal light plants. If you go back in the appendix that, that I put at the end of this slide, or the end of this presentation, we have the M B T A. as a client. Boston Water and Sewer is a client, M W R A. is a client, Yukon Medical. Um, so it's not just M L Ps. or public power. And we also have clients in every state. So we're New England-wide, which is kind of why the, the name is what it is. Um, we have fourteen hundred megawatts of peak load. That's four times anybody else that does this. Um, we also have almost six million megawatt hours of energy that we transition every year. We, um, we work between three hundred million and four hundred million dollars worth of transactions every year on energy. Um, the other thing that, that's on this first page, is E and E. Strategies. Uh, most of you would know Vin Ragucci. I think he's been up here before to talk to you guys. Unfortunately, his dad passed away Sunday morning, so he's on bereavement leave. He's not here. Um, the intent, and I have a couple of slides I'm going to go over, but the intent is for him to come up maybe at September, October's meeting, once the legislature gets back in session. And give the board kind of an update where things are in the legislature. So that, that's Vin's plan. So as I said, it, we, we built the company as a shared services organization for the exact reason of to put knowledge, expertise. Inside of one kind of building, to be able to do that. The organization is really made up of um, a couple of different components. We have a commercial operations division. You'll hear from the head of that. Um, we have an energy efficiency and electrification. Noel's going to speak to that. E and E. Strategies is the lo- lobby arm of, of E and E. We also have E N E. T., which R M L D. is a part of. It's a transmission company. That is trying to get involved in some of the ongoing transmission things that has to be built going forward, because the only way public power can. Kind of protect themselves or hedge against transmission costs which are going up, is to get involved. So we created a separate organization. There are nine members of that, which R M L D. is one. Um, so when you approve Paul as a director, he also sits on the E N E. T. Board. That's not a separate vote. And there's one, uh, what we call a Class B. So there's ten total systems, but then nine members of that. The other thing is, in two thousand, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, we bought Utility Services of Vermont. They are the foremost experts in um, N R C., which is compliance. Compliance reporting, compliance audits. Um, they have a hundred and twenty-one customers now in forty-seven states, and it's a group of nineteen people in Vermont. So you can, you can see how big they are. They do a terrific job, and they have generators, they have utilities, they have large utilities. We do a lot of work in Texas. Um, but a lot of it can be done on a computer, pretty much, to do this compliance. We also have to fly out for certain audits and all that. But that was another piece that we added to the organization. Um, the key benefits of why these, you know, shared services is cost reduction, improved service delivery, you know, it's all up here, enhanced data management, reporting, collaboration, and scalability. We have, I think it's thirty-five total people. Um, there are about fifteen that do the power supply, and then there's another twenty that do the accounting, the settlement group, and then Noel's group. So it's not a big organization for the, the number of um, customers we have or the scale of what we really do. And the shared services approach, I'm just going to give you an example. Um, there are four systems that I would call similar to R M L D. Um, Braintree, Taunton, Westfield, and Wallingford, Connecticut, a, about that size. When you look at a shared services organization, it kind of supplements what you have, right? And again, because that's an expertise thing. Braintree has one person that works with us. They don't need a whole staff to do that. Taunton has three, but they also do engineering. Um, Westfield has two, but they also have gas, and Wallingford has one. So we're able to handle, and again, it's in the back in, in the appendix of all the things that we do on the power supply side. You know, you need somebody at the utility, you know, to work with us, make the decisions. A lot of times it's the G M., but you also want to have somebody internally. You know, to, to look at these projects and so on. Uh, but those are the four that I would say are, are close um, to R M L D. Ownership interest. When R M L D. bought back in, they bought eight point three three percent. It's at the top of the pie chart. Uh, Braintree and Taunton own a third each of the company. That came to be because when Redding left in two thousand and four. Um, each owner then had thirty-three percent. C M A C. left in two thousand and thirteen. Um, and when these other companies came, came in, they came in at five percent and then worked their way up to ten percent when C M A C. left. Um, between two thousand and five and two thousand and seven, when the new customers came in, or the new owners came in rather. Taunton and Braintree covered all of the costs to keep E and E. alive at that time. And they just decided to do that, and good call by them at that time. Uh, but that, that's exactly what the six owner, ownership looks like. If you look at two thousand and nineteen, um, you invested three hundred and thirty-three thousand. Three hundred and twenty dollars. Don't ask me why it's kind of that way, but that was, that's how the numbers came up. At the end of twenty twenty-four, audited financials. Um, you're at six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in equity in the company, so it's already doubled inside of five years. Um, the way the company works is, since, since I've been there, I've been the C E O. since two thousand and eleven. Systems in the same band, meaning size-wise, load-wise, uh, customer base and all that, they all pay the same. So for example, Redding, Braintree, Taunton, Wallingford, Westfield are all in that same band, all pay the same service fee. You don't get a discount as an owner. What you get is equity back into the company at the end of the year, and that's how your equity grows. The reason why we do that, and the reason why I pushed that for a long time, is the customer base that's not an owner. Is always concerned that, uh, is somebody else getting something that they're not, or are we discounting it because they're, they're an owner? So we decided to keep it all the same. That way you can look at a band and know where you fall, depending on what, what's, you know, what system you are and what size you are. Um, it has given us a lot of credibility by doing it that way. You know, because a lot of people are concerned that, oh, you know, this one's going to get something different than us, or, oh, they're an owner, so they're going to get something better than us. That's not the case. But again, the owners get the equity back at, at the end. So net income at the end of the year goes to the owners in their percent ownership.
So.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
There's no dividend or anything that comes with that. It's just any.
Well, we, we, we did a dividend a couple of years ago, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, I think it was. Um, most of the time, the owners have, have decided to keep the money in as equity. We could, we, we've looked at it. There is a dividend policy. But a lot of times, the, the equity money is in there, and you, you'll see, and you see a small dip in twenty twenty-three. We invested in a new um, software system. So that's where the money comes from, you know, for that, is from the equity. So, so that, that's what happened there. So that's been the decision of the board over the years. Um, but again, the, the equity growth, when I took over in twenty eleven, the equity was two point three million. We're bumping up against eight million. So the company's grown. The company's grown because we, we've got more customers, we do more work, and we branched out beyond just public power, but to people that have energy as a concern. The M B T A. is the single largest user of electricity in the state, so to manage their portfolio is a big deal for us. Our approach. And again, looking at most of this, and, and Bob's going to talk a little bit about it, but the portfolio management is what the service agreement really is. Um, there is a significant amount of um, of language in the appendix on exactly, and, and I did it down to the detail, so you can see the kind of things that we do, but. Um, we build everybody, all twenty-seven customers that we have have individual portfolios. Think of your financial advisor, of how they build your portfolio based on age. You know, wh- where you want to be, how risky you want to be. That's how we build it. So no, not one of those twenty-seven has the same portfolio. You may have some of the same projects in it. You may have some of the same uh, deals in it, but it looks all different. And again, it's really based on. Um, the organization's either demographics, goals and objectives, board policies, everybody is a little bit different, so we build the, the portfolios that way. What, what we do is we try to get larger projects in the, you know, fifty megawatt to one hundred megawatt um, range, and then whoever wants in on those projects, we divvy that up. That's typically the way we do it. What that does is it lessens risk. When you divide fifty megawatts by, say, ten or fifteen systems, you know, we try to do three percent of, of load, that way no one. A project or one deal is gonna, is gonna tip you over. It also does dollar-cost averaging, which drops the, the rates. So we try to, we try to, we are very risk averse, just like utilities are. Utilities are notoriously conservative, so we're, we're very risk averse. And again, we're system-specific. But we do do the portfolio management. We, we manage recs. Well, you know, we'll manage them if you want to sell them, uh, buy some, you know, whatever you need. Uh, we do peak load management alerts and operations. We've run some batteries for folks, um, but we do call alerts for peaks, because a lot of people have behind the meter. Um, generation that they can drop their peak, especially around the transmission costs, which is, which are going up. Again, you have, also have the capacity tag, but the, the transmission one right now is uh, is driving it. We do generation management for a few folks. That's also listed in the appendix in the back. Um, energy efficiency Noel's going to talk about, and that goes with the electric vehicle program. So we're, we're trying to be a full-service type organization that can supplement what systems need.
Can we ask questions, Matt, Chair, or John?
No, go ahead, please, yeah.
So, and that is quite a long list of interesting things there, and even though I'm, as you say, the last man standing from twenty nineteen. Um, I don't understand what the, what the financial side of it is. I know we, we pay E and E. a monthly amount. I think we see it in the accounts payable. It's something of the order of thirty-five or forty thousand.
Should be thirty-one thousand.
Okay, that's what I remember. So there's that, and that's a fixed amount every month, right?
Alright.
And so that, what does that piece cover? And then how is that number arrived at? And then I got a couple of follow-ups just to understand the other stuff.
The, the numbers arrive based on that band that everybody else is in. Everything that's on. I just want to flip to it now. Everything that's on. Slide twenty, which I can probably go to quickly and then go back. All those core services, Commissioner? Those are all in that. Service fee. All those things are what we do for all of our customers. Now, we have some customers that will do a couple of the things themselves, but those are all the things we do for everybody.
This whole list?
Correct. These, these are the things that we, we do, and we work again with the utility, or whoever in the utility is assigned, whether it's a, a small group, or whether it's, you know, in some cases, one person. Um, you know, some of our smaller M L Ps, if you think about it, um. Central Mass, some up here on the north, Rowley, Groveland, Georgetown, right up in this area. Their G M. has us do all this for them and report out.
Right, and I remember there's, there's different ones operate very differently. Like I remember you were saying, Paul, you basically outsourced everything when you were at Hingham.
Yep.
And then others where they do everything in-house. For a while there, that was us, right, between?
If, if you, if you go back far.
Yeah.
Um, when I, I, when I got to Hingham in two thousand and four, I think Vin Cameron was up here as, as the G M. Um, you had three people doing power supply at that time. You had Vin, before he took over, Jane, and Billy Selden. And when Vin became G M., you had Jane, Bill Selden, and Maureen.
Right.
So you've had internal folks, but it's only been a few.
Right.
And again, the, the reason we do all this is to integrate with those folks. You know, those folks are doing kind of the inside here. What, what do you guys want to do? What is the policy the board want it to be and so on? And then we would do all this. Right now, we do all your I S O. billing and contract proofing. We get all your bills and all that and make sure that they're correct, because um, as Dave will probably tell you at some point, um, I S O. is not always accurate. So we want to make sure, and the, the group that we have, the settlement group, is actually probably one of the best groups uh, around at that, at that, so.
They're just going through.
Yeah.
I mean, there's other things that aren't in the thirty-one K., like, and one thing I've never understood is on the power contracts, when. You're bringing in a power contract and we're getting a fractional piece of it or the whole thing. Are, is there a part of that that E and E. is, is there a fee that goes to E and E. as part of that? And if so, what is it?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of times, what, what it will be is to manage it going, so upfront.
Yeah.
It usually costs ten or fifteen thousand dollars between legal and our time to put one together.
Okay.
Alright, typically.
Good.
We add twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour to that contract to manage it for the twenty years going out. So it's, it's not, it's not a very big number, but it's something for, because again, we're going to have to manage this for the next twenty years.
You meant megawatt hour.
Mega, I'm sorry, mega, yeah. Tell me, you tell me that was that.
Much bigger problem than.
No, it is. But uh, so we do do that, but that's for the ongoing. Because again, when we do a project like that, and there's a list of projects that I'll show you in here, um, when we do that, we've got it every month. We have to get it in, make sure it ties out. And the project comes in as one whole, then we have to divvy it out and make sure Redding got the correct piece, Braintree got the correct piece, and so on, and then pay the bill.
Twenty-five cents a megawatt hour.
Correct.
For the life of the contract.
Life of the contract.
That could add up to a fair bit.
Over twenty years.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it, it could, but again, if you look at what has to be done over that period of time. Um, you know, the, the interesting thing is, and I know I'm jumping around, so I apologize. But if you look at that list right there, that's a list from twenty twenty. That's six hundred and fifty megawatts of non-emitting, non-carbon projects we've done. So we've got to manage all those, and if you take a look at the far right-hand side, look at the years.
Yeah.
So what we've tried to do, again, I'm jumping around because I'm jumping into some of Vin's stuff, is when we wrote the language for the M L Ps. to also become. Um, as the state was, non-emitting by twenty fifty, and we had the, the twenty thirty goal of fifty percent, twenty, you know, twenty forty was seventy-five percent. We wrote that in, locked us in. We started this a little bit ahead of time, knowing that we could get our folks to this. Because right now, if you look what's out there, and we were talking a little bit about it with Ray in the uh, in the room beforehand, there's not a lot of projects coming out right now. You know, that, and that has to do with a lot, a whole lot of things we could take all night talking about, but, but that's the case. So we locked up as many things as we could, and I'm proud to say, all twenty-seven customers that we have now are already at the twenty thirty goal. And the state's not going to be able to say that. I hate to say that out loud, but I'm on a couple of commissions for the governor, and they need to be realized, you know, without offshore wind or without these other things that aren't coming in, the state's. they need to be realized, you know, without offshore wind or without these other things that aren't coming in, the state's not going to make their goals either. But good news is we have our folks where, where we want them to be. Some are much higher. Um, you know, Braintree's at eighty, I think, is where he's at. He's done every one of these projects. Again, that's, that's their choice, doesn't have to be yours. You guys are fifty-five or, or fifty-six, something like that, I believe, already. So you're ahead of the game, and then obviously beyond that.
Is, is there a um, are you now in some kind of multi-year service contract with RMLD?
Yes.
Now, and what does that look like?
It's, it's typically three years and then a one plus one. And what we typically do, it's three years that has a three percent increase to take care of staff. And then year four and year fives kind of stay the same.
So that was last signed when?
You go till twenty twenty-nine, I think. The other thing is, as an owner, you're kind of locked into that.
Meaning?
Meaning it, it'll get extended. Wha- what, what happened years ago, the, you know, and I'll be honest, because I want you to ask, ask me these questions. The reason why CMEC is no longer in here is all they wanted to do was uh create equity and take dividends without putting any skin in the game. So the, the operating agreement was rewritten that if you're an owner, you, you take services up to a certain level.
Okay, yep, I see.
So it's, it's just the way to, it's the way to operate the organization.
So by skin in the game, it's not investment, but it's use of services.
Correct.
That makes sense.
That's correct. Thank you for that clarification, but that, yes, you are correct. Let me just get back to something because it was, it was an issue up here that I wanted to deal with. Palmer was an issue up here, and if you've seen um some of the Canary Media and, and somebody else had a story, um, a state judge staved off the uh permit rescinding of this project out in Springfield. The, the state had pulled the air permit uh from this project. We have terminated our agreements with this project over two years ago. So there is no project from our point of view, and there are no other investors right now. We had gotten in, in the, in two thousand and thirteen or fourteen, um, the project at that time met the state's um criteria. Woody biomass was actually in the state criteria in, and um, so.
How did that come to be, by the way?
What's that?
That it was in the, I mean, was that something you guys were advocating for to get it in the criteria?
Nope.
Back?
Nope. No, it was already in. It was in there because there was a few operating already in the state. These folks wanted to build one out in Palmer, which is near Springfield. Um, they came to us with a pretty good deal. It's forty megawatt base load and the number um, the cost was in the four cent range. Let me just say that. So that was a pretty good deal for twenty years. Um, but again, it met all the, it had all its state permits. The problem is it languished because of some financing. It languished because they had to prove that they could have twenty years' worth of uh wood chips from all over New England in order to run it. Um, so we kind of let the clock run out, so to speak, and turn, sent the termination letter April first of twenty-three. So as far as anybody knows, and I've gotten three calls already from the media, because they think this is gonna miraculously come back. But we're not jumping back in. There was eight systems in, all eight systems are out. Um, we also, um, I got a call earlier this year. Would we support removal of Woody biomass from the state um legislation?
Which is the current issue that's up right now this fall.
Correct, and we said yes. So when I testified, I said, absolutely, we don't need it. It's okay if it comes out, because it also has to come out of our section. That section nine that we wrote had the same resources listed. So the state's going to remove that anyway. So I don't know what's going to happen with this court issue, but again, uh, that's not our concern. Which, which again, that was not your concern because you were one of the eight. But I did want to address this.
No, 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 it says, and if that clause were to, were to not be removed, then it, it could become financially viable again because they would get REX.
It, it could be, but I, 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 I would tend to doubt that they could get somebody to finance it. That, that would be the, I don't think they could get somebody to finance.
But you support the bill, right, and, and what, uh, the Ramos?
Yeah, the Ramos bill, yep.
And, and I see M W K put something out saying they support it.
I guess. I, 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 you know, I, I did that, I didn't see, but I have a letter in.
Newsletter.
Okay. I have, I have something into them, yes, into Ramos, so. So I just wanted to address that because I know that that was a little bit of an issue up here. Commissioner Talbot might remember.
I, I, vague, vague memory of.
Good, vague is probably good. So jumping into just some of um let's see, I don't want to miss anything here. On the strategy stuff, the, these are some of the things that I've testified on. Um, so far, there's been three hearings at the TUE. Um, some of these are fairly simple. Um, if you look at the first two, the first two have been languishing for a while. We're trying to get um an emergency mutual aid bill and a non-emergency mutual aid bill in. The issue there is um our folks, when they go on mutual aid outside of the state, aren't necessarily covered, depending on how you read the law. And I'm not a lawyer, so I, I don't want to jump too far into it, but this would make them covered.
Insurance.
Insurance covered, correct. That's correct. So we've been at this now for three sessions. We think we're going to get this one through. We actually had it through the last session. And then they dropped a piece of the energy bill last week, so we didn't get it through. This is a two-year session that started this year, so it's going to go through next July. Um, it will start up again, Labor Days next week, the week, probably the week after. Um, I did testify on the governor's bill. The governor's affordability bill, I'm not sure it should be named that, and I just said that in public, so she's gonna have a problem with me, but it's okay. Well, I, I testified with, with some issues. MLPs are mentioned in there on a couple of things that could be problematic to us, so we pointed those out. The other good thing is the new chair of, of the TUE committee is the representative from Braintree. So he is a staunch public power proponent. Uh, Mike Barrett, who's the Senate Side Chair, has conquered in his territory, so we do have some voice in there. But Mark Kusick is the new chair, and we pointed out to him that some of these things just don't make any sense, because again, some of it tramples on something Commissioner Talbot said a little while ago, which is local control. There's a couple of things in the state kind of wants to come, come in and grab, and I don't think anybody's gonna go for that. Memes also working on that, which is kind of our group of forty municipals. But I did testify on that, and there's a few other things on here. There is um a couple of bills to study what does nuclear look like in the future, you know, whether it's SMRs or whether it's something like that. Uh, Brad Jones had put one of the bills in, who's the rep up here. Um, he wanted, and, and I've said it, it's okay, because like I have nothing else to do. Um, he, he threw in there that um the CEO of the ENE would be added to the commission. Because, because we want public power at least represented, whatever way it goes, whatever we think is going to happen. He wanted somebody in there, so Brad was kind enough to, to put that in his, in his legislation, so. But like I said, Vin will have more on this, because right now, all we've had is a few hearings. Nothing has moved. Everything is still in the committee. Nothing's been reported favorable, not favorable. And the all, ever-present study committee, if you hear study committee, it's dead. It's, it's just done. This was what I was talking about earlier. We wrote this legislation and got it passed um with the former chair, which is an interesting story for some people if, if they don't know. Tom Golden was the chair of the Telecom um and Energy Committee. He represented Lowell, so he didn't have an MLP in his territory. But he, he actually sponsored this bill, which is uncommon for a chair of a committee to sponsor a bill. Um, he's not the city manager actually at Lowell. He left the legislature as a city manager. Yeah. No, I liked him, he's a, a good guy. But, you know, he helped us get to this, so now we're in line with the rest of the Commonwealth. Which is, which is an important thing, because a lot of times they like to point fingers and say, well, look at what these guys are doing or what public power is doing and so on, but we're in line now with this, so. How we got there, you know, how we got there, and I kind of preempted it by jumping to the list. Is most of what those projects that you see on there are related to these four type of resources. And yes, there is some nuclear in there too. We extended some nuclear contracts and so on. Interestingly enough, if you, if you haven't seen it, in the governor's affordability bill, she's looking to repeal the nuclear law from nineteen eighty-two. The state voted in nineteen eighty-two after the whole Seabrook issue to put any nuclear project ever, if it was ever to come up again, it had to go in front of the voters of mass. It's the only resource that the state voters get to vote on. So she wants to repeal that because in order to meet goals again, they may have to put an RFP out for Seabrook and/or Millstone. And you can't do that with that law sitting there in place. So that's actually in that governor's bill too, so.
Is the um
Yep.
Uh, current administration of Washington, going to cut wind out of your proposal there?
Well, the good news is, all the wind that we have is either already built or is in production already that we're signing up for. There's a couple of, of contracts that are coming off that we can then jump onto. But the four wind projects that are about a hundred and thirty-seven megawatts of that have already been built and are already running, so. Um, offshore, obviously, as you're saying, is not going to be an option, as we saw. He also stopped the Maryland project today. So he stopped one in Rhode Island, he stopped the Maryland one today. On my way up here, I saw that. Solar, um, you know, we've gotten as much solar as, as we can get. It takes up a lot of land. People are now worried about cutting down trees to create land and all that. It's also jumped significantly in price, and again, Bob can talk a little bit about that. Um, so we're kind of in this limbo of resources, which is, which is why I'm glad we jumped on that six hundred and fifty megawatts, which is the next um slide on here. But it, it is going to be a challenge. If, if you look and people have to realize, you know, twenty twenty-eight is, is our next election, right? That's the earliest something can change. So I don't see a lot of things changing like that, and then who knows what happens after that. We were talking to one of the offshore wind developers, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. They said if they started today, they wouldn't be able to put something online till twenty thirty-one or thirty-two anyway. So that's beyond the twenty thirty goal because of supply chain permitting, you know, and all the things that go with it. And obviously, it's not that simple. You have one wind project that's probably going to get finished here in mass. Then everything else gets further out. You're down below Nantucket and the Vineyard. It gets further out. Um, so tho- those projects are not simple. I don't know if anybody's done any, any, you know, a lot of projects like that. It's not simple at all, so. Um, any questions on, because I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn it over to Bob Castle?
Just on non, non-carbon projects, what's the projection of the amount of like you're at six hundred and forty-three now, what do you need to be at by twenty thirty, twenty forty, twenty fifty?
Well, the, the, the twenty, the twenty, the twenty thirty, because of some of these and other ones we've done prior to that, were already set. So that, that fifty percent mark will meet, so we're not worried about that. What starts to get nervous is twenty thirty to twenty forty. We need to get, get another twenty-five percent in everybody's portfolio. Also understanding load's going to grow.
Right.
That's the biggest concern to me, is that load is going to grow, right? So if that happens, now again, we've been, I don't know if you want to call it lucky, it's just what's going on. Load is not materializing the way we all thought, right? If you look at it, and Dave can probably speak to the um, the report that ISO did put out, and they ratcheted down uh the forecast going out. Because electrification hasn't taken hold the way they thought. Um, you know, uh, the, the former administration had a goal of three hundred thousand electric vehicles by twenty twenty-five. Well, guess what it is now? It's twenty twenty-five, we've got about a hundred and forty, so we're not getting there. The new administration, their goal is nine hundred thousand by twenty thirty. I'm going to guess we might not get there.
You say administration, you're talking about Massachusetts?
Massachusetts, strictly Massachusetts, yeah. Oh, yeah. The, the federal is going to put a crimp into that too.
That's my question. What's the projection in terms of how many megawatt hours you need or megawatts you need of power to meet those goals, including the increased percentage target plus?
Oh, we'll, we'll, we'll need, we'll need to, we'll need to double, we'll need to double this from twenty thirty to twenty forty.
Okay.
Right now, again, we're good to twenty thirty, but now we can't, you know, I always say to these guys, we can't sit on our laurels per se. But we're also not seeing a lot of projects like this, and no one's building anything because they're worried about it. The green financing folks are pulling back their money, waiting to see what happens. Um, so we're going to have a challenge. Load not growing as fast, you know, helps some, but twenty-five percent, you know, increase in resources for every one of our, our systems. And that goes, you know, across the Commonwealth. It's not just, you know, the twenty-seven we have or anybody else. It also includes grid, includes ever-source, includes everybody else. Um, it's going to be a challenge across the board, but that's what we need to do. Because that, that's what we signed up for. The seventy-five percent in twenty forty is what the number is, unless, unless, and again, the state of Connecticut ratcheted down their numbers this past session. Connecticut's one of these interesting places. They, they start their legislative session in January and they're done before Memorial Day. As a matter of fact, I've, I've been there on their last day. They actually throw all the papers in, um City Hall or, or the state Capitol is a kind of a square, they throw it off the balconies. It's hilarious what they do, but anyway, they ratcheted down their forty percent in twenty thirty to twenty-nine percent. So they've gone backwards figuring that they can't meet these goals. So let's put a more realistic goal out there. Governor Lamont is also the one who said no to the four hundred megawatts of offshore wind. The Massachusetts was going to purchase twelve hundred, he was going to purchase, or eight hundred, he was going to purchase four hundred, so that project died. He's looking more at the Millstone facility. He has a contract with Millstone till twenty twenty-nine. He's going to want one of those units again. That's the way he's going to get to his goals if he can, and I think that's why they ratcheted him down some, because again, you know, you keep those projections out there, and if it doesn't materialize, what do you tell people? You know, you're telling the public one thing, and, and everybody knows what's going on. To Mr. Wood's comment about the federal government, everybody knows what's going on. If we're not going to meet the goals, we probably should tell people, or say, hey, we're not going to meet them till twenty thirty-two or thirty-three. That's at least better than getting to twenty, into twenty twenty-nine and saying, uh-oh. But no, we, we're going to have to double that, Madam Chair. Um, at least that. And again, it really depends on, are we going to see one, two, three percent load growth in systems? Are we going to see more? Some will have more. You know, the Concord's, Belmont's, Hingham's, Wellesley's of the world. You know, they, they've been first to the, the gate in EVs and all that, you know, have, have all the first um first movers on those done it already? Are there more? It just, it really depends. So we're caught, we're all kind of caught. But sooner or later, the concern is that demand's going to get, go this way, and we're not going to have the supply. Because the other thing is, and I don't mean just to meet these goals, I mean to meet the grid's goals. And again, Dave can probably speak a little, a little better to that than I can, but um there aren't any new big resources being built either. And we've, we've shut down several big ones in the last couple of years.
John? Yes, sir. I, I'm, I'm sensitive to time here, but I want to ask a question before
Yes.
you go into other stuff. But I want to first thank you for what ENE does for RMLD and you in particular for what you've done for the state and NEPA and other organizations.
Thank you.
So uh, my, my question is that, you know, I see ENE and MVAC operating to some extent in a similar space.
Mm-hmm.
I, at, at least to me, okay? And like, we have some people, like, I mean, Danvers, for example, I mean, uses services from both MVAC and ENE. And I think RMLD also has some services from MVAC. So at a high level, what does MVAC do? And what does ENE do that is different and important for RMLD? So if you can give, just give us a sense of that. I mean, I, I know it's not a fair question because I'm, I'm not asking this of MVAC, but you know, just from your perspective.
No, the, the, both, both organizations do a lot of similar things. Um, we, you know, and it's tough for me not, not to say it like this, but I'm going to. I mean, yeah, I won't. You know, we seem to do it a lot better. And um, you know, if you look at the list of customers that's in the back here, most of them came from MVAC. And the rationale for that is, and we just had one come over July first, is that we've been traditionally forty to fifty percent cheaper for doing the same thing. And that's, that's not a number I'm just throwing around. That is the number. The organization that just came over saved a little more than fifty percent coming over, and they're getting the same services that are listed on there. In their view, it was better. They, they spent a year and a half studying, looking, doing their due diligence, and I give them a lot of credit. You guys have Connected Homes um with MVAC. That's, that's a program they have that we don't. Um, last number is where they had like eighteen hundred customers total. So it just depends on, you know, is your demographic going to pick and do these things? You know, a lot of people don't want you to control devices. You know, it's just one of those big brother things. Will it someday come to be? Maybe, maybe. Um, but there, there's not.
So MVAC is a nonprofit public corporation.
Yep.
And it's supposed to be a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Correct.
I mean, this is reading from their website.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
And whereas ENE is uh, it's a private entity, right?
But it's got. It, it's not really a private entity because it's owned by six municipal utilities, so it's still a quasi-public entity.
Okay.
Right? The, the owners, you know, it's not a private organization that has stock. It's owned by six municipal utilities.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I, I, so I just wanted to, structurally, that, that, I, I, I just want to recognize there's a difference. Because if we go to their pub, website, you can see the annual reports, you can see their audited financials.
And you, and you guys have all those too, because we give them to the GM
Okay.
every year. We're audited, the financials are audited every March.
Yeah, so as, as board members, we have access.
Correct. And, and your, your, your finance folks, I know, I think Patty Cameron's doing it now, right? She's the interim. Um, you know, they have the K ones, which is your equity positions, both in USV and in ENE, so all that's available. We just don't post it on the website. We give it to the owners. And it's, the owners are public entities, so you could put it up, you know, if you wanted. Um, the, the other difference. Um, the, the other difference is, and, and there's been a lot of talk about, you know, joint action, right? They, they like to claim that they're a joint action agency. The last time I looked in Webster's dictionary, joint action is people coming together for the same common good. I would say those, that six hundred and fifty megawatts is people coming together for the same common good. I don't need a, a moniker at the bottom of our company, you know, to say that we do a good job.
No, no, clearly the market, you can see the market signals, but, but just, just want to recognize that, you know, you have two organizations and, yeah, just more, at least for.
Yeah, because we do land versus power supply.
Yeah, yeah, I think we just had a, I don't know how many power supply contracts.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, I, I guess in, in that point of Vivek, and Jason's correct in that. Everybody who's come over brings their contracts over with them, so if you go back to nineteen seventy eight, you go back to nineteen eighties. When MVAC signed up all the municipal systems for Seabrook, or they signed them up for Millstone, or any of the other projects, those come with you. You, you don't leave those at the door, you guys have them, you guys have Project Five and Project Six. That were MVAC projects way back when, but they're really public power projects. When you came over, we just managed for you now, so that, that's what we're doing for, for them. So i- in that regard, there are some contracts that still exist, but we end up managing them. But those are all spelled out, I mean, there, there's no, um, there's no trickery to that type of thing.
Yeah, no, no, I, I just wanted to recognize that, you know, those are the two entities that work in the space and.
Well, a- a- and there is, but then you also have ACES, you have CES, you have a whole bunch of other more private entities that want to work in this space too, that have, have looked at it over the years, so. Uh, but we're the two predominant ones, um, they're basically Massachusetts, we're more New England, we have, you know, two people and two customers in Vermont. Um, Maine, Connecticut, so we're a little bit, we're a little bit different. The other thing is, we have, um, agencies like Yukon, like the T, like Boston Water and Sewer and so on, that they can't service.
Okay.
Just because of the charter that you're talking about, so that, that's really the difference.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try to keep this question brief because I'm mindful of time is, and it's sort of related to Vivek, so there's a bunch of things that you're doing, you're doing our home energy audits, right?
We were, we were.
Not anymore, okay. Who's doing that?
I do.
Okay. I do.
Both do.
Oh, sorry, yeah, one of those.
So, but, so I guess there's, there's some things that you're doing that could arguably be put up to public procurement to get competitive offers, right? Or not?
On?
Services that you provide to RMLD that we pay you for?
On, on the, on the energy efficiency side, which is what you've done, because we won the last two bids to do your home energy audit. This time I didn't see an RFP come up, so I don't know what happened there.
Okay.
On the power supply side, as an owner, you own that.
Meaning we own, we own part of you, so that's just part of the deal.
Correct, that's how the operating agreement reads.
Alright, correct. I will have fatigue setting it pretty soon, so I know.
I'm sorry, because I went, I went long, but, but I, but I want to make sure, because again, there's some newer folks here.
I don't know if, Madam Chair, how long you want to, because this is, this is.
Five more minutes?
Yeah.
And we can, we'll quickly go through. It, the other, the other, obviously, the other thing, we'll come back, that, that's not, or as you go through the presentation that you guys have, that Eric was nice enough to give for me. Just ask, just reach out to us or reach out through Paul, we'll, we'll answer anything you have, so. Go ahead, Bob, you, you have to be quick, because Dave's got to be quick. Yeah, and, and you've, you've already gone over a lot of this, but, uh. One other difference between us and MVAC is we focus more on power purchase agreements. And they have focused more on building and owning generation, and there's good and bad parts of both of those. You know, from our perspective, a PPA allows you to throw, put as much risk as possible on the supplier. Whereas if you own a unit, you're taking the development risk and the operational risk of a unit. Versus putting that on the experts who do that type of thing. Uh, I'm not going to repeat what, uh, it's already been out there, but we also, you know. We talk, we've come here and talked a lot about what the energy market is like and what you're buying for energy. But we also look at capacity and recs, we've talked about recs, uh, and ancillary services as well. I mean, capacity is going to be another big issue, it hasn't been an issue to date because it's been plentiful. Uh, but the market is changing, and Dave may speak about that, but the market's changing soon. Uh, and we suspect capacity price is going to increase. So we've been trying to buy capacity in our power purchase agreements wherever we can to try to hedge the capacity position, but. Everyone's going to be paying more for capacity soon, so that, 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 that's going to be an ongoing issue in the next five years or so. Uh, well, the next page, we have, uh.
One, go ahead, quick. I did, you guys, um, mentioned the ISO settlements.
Yep.
What, what kind of, what kind of ballpark are we talking about? Like, what's, what's the return, like, your focus on that? What does that return to Reading Light or to your clients that that settlement does is? Are you looking at the bill and you find five percent, you find a ten percent, I know these are the biggest bills we get, right? Are, are you, what, what's the range that you're finding or?
It, it ranges from, you know. Inaccurate, um, meter reads coming in and what the, what the billing is on the invoice in some cases. It's been up to as much as we had a, um, a paper mill in Maine that ran as a cogent. So it's not a public utility, but, um, they were overcharged by two hundred thousand dollars, which was a year's worth of service. So it's anywhere from, you know, dollars to two hundred thousand dollars in the last, say, five or six years. Um, we are extremely accurate. I mean, the, the, the joke, and, and I know I'm running long, but the joke was, I had a general manager from one of our systems. Um, it was off by like a dollar twenty five, and our settlement people wouldn't close it, they were going to find it. And he said to me, can we just pay this? I said, I'm not telling them that, because what it, what it shows is they're going to find it no matter what, and they did, I hate to say it, but they found it. But that's how they think about these things, they, because it's, it's your money, and we know that, you know what I mean? So we want to be as accurate, as consistent as we can. Um, I don't know, what, what did you say?
Yeah, I would say having spent thirteen years in the ISO, um, they're very accurate, their business processes really look to be accurate, it's a multi-billion dollar annual market. Also having run the groups where ENE would call in to complain about stuff, when they rang the phone, I told my team, whatever they're telling you, they're right. Because they know what they're doing, and the thing is, Mr. Vice Chair, is they turn this around twice a week for all the customers. Dissect the settlement, make sure it's accurate, and then give advice back to our customers. It's no small undertaking, they've updated their systems, ENE's updated their systems to manage that. And they're, they're, the big issue is meter reader error, we have a nine hundred thousand dollar error on a system right now that our team saw. And we're involved in that as well, but the team is very active on a daily basis, looking at the data coming through. It's important that we are interacting with your staff that are involved in that piece, so to make sure that we're having communication, certainly behind the meters, issues. If we have more generation behind the meter, we want to know about that model, so we can better pick if there's a deviation. But their self-interest, but seeing it from both sides, they're super accurate and they're very, very timely in what they do.
Do you want to just jump to the Reading specific stuff, Bob? Uh, please. Well, uh, yeah, I just wanted to also mention that there, back when RMLD was purchasing its own power mostly, that was more standard products. And there's kind of two ways to buy power, and the standard product is just a typical megawatt block of energy. It's pretty simple to buy, you can buy it from multiple suppliers, so there's, we still do that. And then there's buying all these PPAs and managing those contracts and bidding, uh, RMLDs load into the pool every day. And then checking and confirming all those contracts, uh, every month, okay? Uh, so going out to twenty thirty, RMLD's in good shape. Here, you know, ninety five percent hedged to eighty two percent hedged. Uh, these contracts were all done at very competitive power prices that have since nearly doubled pretty across the board. So from an energy perspective, going out to twenty thirty, RMLD's in very good shape, in energy cost perspective. Let me go to the next one, John, and then just to look at, uh, the power supply coming in versus RMLDs load. And remember, this is, these are two moving targets, we've talked about this in the past. We have a lot of intermittent resources coming on and off. And then we have RMLDs load that goes up and down kind of seasonally and daily and hourly, actually. Uh, so you'll see, uh, and then we see those open spaces on the peaks, that's where we're purchasing the standard blocks to fill in those empty spots. So you're more hedged, so you're not open to the volatility in the marketplace. And we actually measure that every day, we have seven people in my group. Uh, one is, uh, you know, has a math and modeling background, so we do things like Monte Carlo simulations. On what your open position is and when we should fill it or not fill it. Uh, we do, we, uh, keep a fundamental analysis and a forward curve of power prices. So when someone comes up to us and says, we have power, we want to sell to you at X, we can do an analysis. That says where that power is compared, the price is compared to the forward market. Things like that are not easy to do, and you, you need expert, you know, expertise to do that. And we have trouble finding those people to fill those seven spots, uh, just to keep them, so it's not easily replicated in, in today's market.
On the part of the graph where the colored area exceeds the black line, what happens to that purchased power?
So, and that, that's mostly, uh, the springtime, and so, I mean, when that power is sold back to the pool. When we do those transactions, we actually take that into consideration. So if we buy a contract that we think is going to be heavily delivered in the spring, which we try to avoid. You know, when we look for things like hydro, we're looking for big hydro on big rivers that has consistent flows. And we do a ten-year analysis on what those flows look like, so we know when that power is going to come in. There's some legacy contracts that RMLD has from way back that are smaller hydro deals. There's one big one that really frankly shouldn't have been done, it wasn't recommended by us, but it was done anyway. And, uh, that one is causing some of that, that issue.
Which one are you talking about?
The Falls Village contract. Uh, but, you know, there is technology coming along to, you know, long-term storage that may make sense economically to move those around. We're actually also looking at putting things in, like, we're also looking at buying a product from some financial players. That can switch out intermittent shape for fixed shape. So we'll try to push some of that intermittency risk on others that are bigger that can handle that. We're just looking at what that, that can cost right now, and we're also looking at internally shifting some of that. Excess supply from one MLP to another MLP, maybe long or short, looking to address it. Right, you've got, you've got, you've got some that are the opposite of that, that, that don't have it at that particular time, that may be under. So if we can do inter-municipal transfers, and take some of yours that you have extra and give it to them.
Yeah.
We have a couple of people in that, in that situation, that may make some sense too, and, and it's only an inter, you know, public power municipal situation makes it all simpler.
Mm-hmm.
So we're looking at those kind of things, because there, there are a couple of people that are in similar places, but we try to stay below that. We try to keep people between eighty-five and ninety percent hedged, and that gives you room. But again, load will help with some of that, obviously, too, if your load goes. And most of that, when those were done by RMLD, not blaming anyone in the, in the way past that did those contracts. Some of them are coming, uh, up for renewal or ending in the, in the next few years. And we would recommend any small hydro deal, do not renew it, please let that go onto the market, back to the supplier. But, uh, at the time, doing those made sense because you were just mixing them in with your block purchases. It wasn't a big part of the portfolio. Now it's got, and now it's bad because it pushes the portfolio up at the wrong time, Commissioner. But there are things coming along that could change that. I'm going to, I'll just skip all that, I mentioned these guys already, so this is just inevitable, these are the other advisory people that we do work for. And again, there's a, there's a whole list at the, at the back. All right, Dave?
Great, thanks. Board of Commissioners and Citizens Advisory Board for having us, I'm Dave Kavanaugh, CEO VP of Regulatory Markets. As John mentioned, I also oversee ENE T, our transition F T. Uh, my role really is, and I wasn't listed on slide twenty, but you can pencil that in. My, my role is to represent you and, uh, all the other twenty eight members in the, um, regulatory process in New England. Uh, and that's the NE pool process, stakeholder process, um, having had the advantage of working for EverSource Northeast Utilities for fifteen years, ISO for thirteen years. A power developer, NRG for three years, and now back with my second stint with ENE, we've, we've had the opportunity to work around the table. And so we were able to bring that, uh, experience back to this discussion and work heavily with the ISO, ISO Senior Manager at FERC. Northern Conference of Public Utility Commissioners and NESCO members on, on issues that are of your interest to your organization or practically any public power entity in the region. Uh, work on market design, make sure that your interests are represented in the tariff discussions, uh, and different market designs. Uh, also, I serve as the, uh, Vice Chair of the Publicly Owned Entity Sector since twenty nineteen, I was the Chairman of NE Pool for three years. Uh, and, uh, twenty one to twenty three. And, uh, really, it's about, uh, making sure your interests are represented across those forums, uh, industry forums, and been invited to speak at FERC a few times, um, in the region here and in Washington. And, uh, we advocate, uh, when appropriate, unfair violence, if there's something that's of concern to us. We don't carry a legal budget, like I did with one of my former, you know, energy, when I was, I had a legal budget here. We decided if it's something that's strategic to us, we go out and pass the hat and say, who's interested? And we get a really good turnout to file litigation and FERC when we find it appropriate to do so. An interest of time, John, square next slide, and stop me at any point in time. Uh, in, in this, uh, as your service provider here, again, as a shared, shared services. Um, I run a, a weekly call every Monday, three to four, it covers everything that went on the previous week about market design, anything that's gone on the six or seven committees I sit on. It's a way of keeping everybody contemporary and allows folks to flag issues of interest for them. Capacity market's being completely redesigned right now, that's of interest to all of us. So every week, everybody gets a little feed, that's what's going on with that. And every month, I send out an advisory as to, uh, the upcoming vote at the Participants Committee. Which is the last stop, uh, for NE Pool stakeholder processes before issues are filed with the Commission. Uh, so going into that, we have a sense of where we are, and we take a position that's important, because when the FERC gets the record. They want to know where public power is, they want to know where all the regional stakeholders are, but clearly where we are as well. Um, I, unlike the many of my peers, I do a lot of behind-the-meter interconnection work, worked with your staff, uh, here, Peter Price and Jason Stafford at Danvers. Uh, to make sure that we're interconnected behind the meter resources or, you know, battery, uh, solar. And, uh, also I do some in-front-of-meter work as well. Um, and capacity market, having the capacity market through various iterations through the design. As well as having, uh, RAN resources for NRG and manage the whole, um, energy efficiency portfolio in the capacity market for Northeast Utilities. And certainly for our folks, uh, Taunton and Braintree, uh, retiring resources out of the market, consistent with their rules. Um, and generally, um, anything that goes down with the ISO and, uh, a MLP, uh, I'm the interface. So folks have an issue or a question, they reach out to me and I help smooth that out or provide guidance. It doesn't mean that, uh, folks that are, uh, technical experts and areas don't interact with ISO directly, but when there's issues of, uh, need for support or understanding. I'm injected into that process to make sure things go smoothly. Or where there's a problem, see if we can iron it out, make sure that it's effective, and we're able to do the things we need to do. And be compliant with the tariff, which is number one, uh, being non-compliant is not a good thing at the end of the day. So, um, that's a whirlwind tour of, uh, what you get with your services, uh, through ENE, uh, in this particular space.
And Commissioner Taunton, Dave's work and Vinnie's work is in that thirty one thousand, is in that invoice.
Oh, okay.
So theirs isn't separate, Dave does have separate contracts with others who just want his services. But that's all built in, that's part of the whole service agreement, so ENE Strategies and Dave's, um, Market Affairs and ISO Representation and all that is all included in that. And that's on those last few pages, so I'm going to skip by the appendix, because you guys can look at it. Um, one of those up there, I'll take that, Noel will go fairly quickly.
Yeah, most of this is fairly straightforward, uh, but. Good evening, uh, Reading Board of Commissioners, thanks obviously for having us here this evening to talk about energy new and Noel Chambers, Director of Energy Efficiency and Electrification. Um, really, we'll go through this fairly quickly, but, um, just want to give you a scope and idea about what sort of really my team is constituted of. I've got two managers, one of which is my Operations Manager. Uh, broadly speaking, she manages the, uh, day-to-day of the audit programs, the rebate programs, the solar programs. Uh, and the commercial programs for somewhere between eight and twenty different light plants across two states. Uh, and then I also have a Manager of Transportation Electrification, uh, Kate and Leahy Barbe. uh, who helps manage the, uh, EV programs, such as education and awareness, uh, for nine municipal light plants. So that basically ranges anywhere from a help desk. So question and answer as simple as where's the charge port on my plug and hybrid? The whole way up to walking a fleet customer through the transition from what you need from infrastructure? What vehicle should you be buying? Uh, sort of that whole scope. And really my group is, our roles that really help supplement your staff with subject matter experts. Um, and as part of that, it's helped support common tasks like rebate processing, like, uh, so that Q and A customer service aspect, uh, to do it in a consolidated capacity as a municipal cooperative, as a joint action agency, as a shared services agency is that you don't have to have that cost inside of your municipal light plant. We take that on rebate processing is a fairly monotonous thing. We employ two rebate processors and that's what they do. Day in, day out, looking at air source heat pump rebates, whether it's A and E Vs, the full gauntlet.
Can just pause for a second. I, I just was notified that somebody does have their hand up.
Oh.
To ask a question, so, um, let's just double check that, please.
Hi, I'm bringing you up.
Uh, yes, I can hear you. Thank you. My hand has been, uh, up for a while. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can.
All right, awesome. Um, my question was for the, um, legislative and policy update. Uh, I know that E and E testified in favor of several bills this session, including eliminating biomass and supporting modular nuclear studies. And my question is how does E and E decide which position to take and how are the members utilities consulted before they testimony?
Typically, Vinnie has ES thirty-one, um, customers that he represents. So he'll talk to most of them and see kind of where we sit on that. The, um, the Woody biomass, um, based on two, uh, up to two thousand and twenty-three, um, most of our folks were not interested in any kind of biomass after we, after we terminated. So that, that one was fairly easy, I would say, and I get to take away about four or five of the, um, thirty-one and not MLPs. Of the twenty-six or twenty-seven MLPs, it's pretty unanimous to move away from any kind of biomass discussion. So that, that was that one. The, um, the nuclear research or the nuclear planning for the future is something we just think we should be involved with so we know what's going on. It's not a, we're not taking a position on it. It's more that we'd, we'd want to be involved than not involved, or at least have a seat at the table. I hope, I hope that answers.
Okay, so, so yeah, that answers it. Uh, yes, it does answer. So, so then the follow-up question to that is, is there, what's the E and E strategy for ensuring that municipality utilities' interests are not overshadowed by the largest investor, as you mentioned, that you mentioned that you consulted with some other non-municipal utilities? So is that, what's your strategy for doing that in such a way that, um, uh, larger investor utilities in, in this, are not, that, that policymaking is not overshadowed by the, by the bigger, um, by the bigger, larger investor-owned utilities? So what's, what's your strategy for ensuring that municipalities' utilities' interests are not overshadowed by these large investors?
Well, unfortunately, we're only fifteen percent of the load in this particular state, so it's going to, it's hard to, to push back. We have pretty good relationships. I came from EverSource, um, so did Dave. You know, he came from the N-Star side at, at one time. But we're, we're not, we're not going to push the needle. We just need to be at the table to have these conversations. Um, a lot of times the, the investor-owned utilities are, you know, if you take a look at it and Commissioner Colta probably knows, um, if you look at the state puts out RFPs and the utilities then have to sign those contracts. So they're kind of sitting there, you know, quasi at the table at the same time. They get to negotiate the contract, but it's not a choice on going in for offshore wind or whatever. The state kind of does that. Um, we just want to be at the table, be able to have our say. The advantage is that, um, we are public power. We carry a big stick in our communities. You know, RMLD, Bell, TMLP, all well-respected in their communities. So, and we also have, if you look up here, uh, um, Brad Jones and Bruce Tar have five MLPs in their territory. They carry some weight at the state house too. Um, so we try to do that, but you know, I gotta be honest, we're not going to drive the discussion. We're just, we're not big enough to drive the discussion, but we're going to be there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought. Go, go ahead.
If we can, I'm going to say let's move forward. I know that you have quite a number of slides to.
I, I can move through them fairly quickly.
Okay, cool. But I was going to suggest if we don't want to do that, if we want to just plan, I know you said you may come back again just so we can give the content that you put together justice, because I think it's really interesting.
Yeah, you know, it might be better. I'll have Noel come up with Vinnie.
Yeah.
So when he does the legislative thing, we can just.
But, um, but yeah, I think I, I would love to hear more about that, but I want to make sure we give it justice.
Understood, yeah.
Good idea.
Thank you. Appreciate, we appreciate the time.
No, I appreciate you.
Thank you, everybody.
Really.
Yeah, thank you. Pleasure to see you. Yeah, for everybody.
Going rushing through it and not really fully digest.
Exactly.
Um, okay. Thanks, everyone. Uh, do we, is everybody good to keep going? Do we need a break? All right, um, so thanks again to the E and E team. Uh, we're going to move forward to the IT updates. So John, thank you for joining, um.
No, it's not. Yeah, I need the mic.
All right.
All right, so, um, I just have a brief update. We're going to go into executive for some of the more, you know, the details that just can't be in an, uh, open forum. So, um, I know one of the things that the board had mentioned a few times was the phone system, right? So we did upgrade, uh, upgrade our phone system. We swapped it over, um, to a new cloud-based system. We've been on that for six months or so, give or take. So, um, what that did is it just, not only did it give us more functionality, but it addressed vulnerabilities that were in the old platform. When these systems age, they can no longer be updated. The vulnerabilities that we scan for, it's part of the vulnerability management program, is they just, there's nothing you can do with them. You just have to, just have to live with them, right? So, um, that's nice to get that done, that is done, completed, um, elevator phones, the whole, everything is working, operations. It's a, that's, that's a nice project that we got done. Um, we also, in conjunction with Chris's team, implemented a new unified security camera and a card access system. So that's all, um, all new network hardware, network backbone that it, is all IP-based. That's working. It works great. The new cameras are really nice, uh, gives us a lot more ability to go back and look at, to reconstruct cases in, when people have fallen, for instance, someone fell, you know, what time was that? So we can do a, a case and put that together and have all the evidence there for anything that we need to do. So that, that's, um, that's done and working. So the SCADA system, um, like everything else, needs to be upgraded from time to time, right? So the servers age, the hardware ages, uh, we made significant upgrades on that in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, end of two thousand and twenty-four into two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we just kicked off the AMI project, which is going to be a multi-year project. That's all new IP network design. It's going to have a couple of different, uh, modes of transport. We can go into that again, uh, in the executive session. But, uh, we have our collectors ready to go, working with the vendors, uh, our team configured them, brought them online. We're ready to go. We've got four units ready to go. So when Nick's ready, which will be soon, he's going to put some meters out and we'll start running that system, which is going to be exciting because we're going to move through the entire, um, what's it, twenty-three thousand or whatever, thirty-three thousand, uh, meters. We've also expanded our vulnerability management capabilities significantly. That's something I'll go into again in executive session, but, um, vulnerability management is extremely important because you have to be aware, the vulnerabilities are what the adversary tries to exploit, right? So if you're not on top of them, if you're not patching, if you're not updating your systems, then you're just leaving it open. They're going to go find the person, the softest target, so you don't want to be that. So it's vulnerability management is very important. And, uh, as is skills development training, because as the threat landscape changes, our team's skills have to be up to date. So we invest a lot of time and energy in training and, uh, in skills development. We can go into some more of that as well, uh, if you'd like in executive session, but lots of things going on. So always changing. There's never a dull moment in, in IT and, and security in particular. So, um, that's the high-level overview. If you have any questions.
So, John, this, uh, seems to be a recap of things that we've accomplished over the last year within the space.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
As we think about kind of moving ahead.
Mm-hmm.
What are the key areas of focus?
Well, I know some of them we'll talk about offline. Yeah, sure, sure. The, the AMI project is going to be a multi-year project, so we'll be building out all the transport reports that. Vulnerability management is always changing. We, we're going to do, um, actually doing a pilot of something, uh, around email security. We can go into an executive session. Uh, we're always evaluating what the market has to offer. We don't just go out and buy everything because, I mean, if it doesn't fit, you know, it may fit a different organization. It may, but if we have something where we feel there's value, um, that's one of the benefits of RMLD. If, if there's, if it's legitimate, there's a legitimate use case, it's going to benefit the organization. For the most part, we've been able to, to purchase that product. So, um, that, that's something that, that we do, uh, on an ongoing basis. Vulnerability management is something that's, I do part of that every day, you know, every day, vulnerability management stuff. So, um, but going forward really for the next six months or so is going to be AMI. And then, uh, what we do with, um, uh, CIS, which I'll go into more detail, uh, in executive as well.
Okay. John, thank you. So part of what we requested here from, at least from the cab side, was to get an understanding of the IT, OT and cybersecurity issues to help us be better prepared for budget decisions, right? So we're going to have budget discussions later in the year. So, uh, at a high level, could you just tell us, you know, what are the big challenges that are faced? I mean, you can decide what is public, what is appropriate in a public setting and what's not appropriate in a public setting. Can, can I just finish my question, please?
Yeah.
So what are the main IT and OT opportunities and challenges? I mean, what, that's, we want to know, what is it that, I know what we, we've approved last year and you, you're following through on that. Help us appreciate, what, what are the opportunities that maybe we should be looking at, we're not? So that we are prepared for it? What are the challenges that you're having in doing what you are supposed to do?
Okay.
And who's responsible for the OT budget? There's an IT budget and there's an OT budget. So does the OT budget go into operations and then you, so, so help us understand that.
Yeah, so, um, the challenges is, is state, a lot of state, uh, state-sponsored hacking, right? You have, you have China, we're a critical infrastructure provider, we're a target. We have, um, as part of that, we have, and I have a handout actually that you can have in, uh, executive of, of how some of the equipment on, in the OT environment, uh, it's, I guess you'd say as far as cybersecurity goes, it's, it's behind IT. Because IT was always public-facing, um, so you always had.
I, I, IT is more sophisticated than OT.
Well, yeah, yeah. And in, in, as far as cybersecurity goes, yes, it is. So protecting the OT infrastructure is, is very challenging. There's not as many products available or services available in that space. So that's, that certainly is a challenge for us. The, the, the threat to, to us gets, the changes every day, gets more sophisticated. Uh, so that's always, that's, that's going to be a challenge. It's not going away. Um, I think for an opportunity, we have to continue doing training for our users. Uh, phishing is a, is a, is a big problem. Uh, it's a problem for everyone. They, they're getting better. They're, some of these things come through and, and, you know, these people do the training and they've, they're doing a very good job. Um, but, you know, sometimes people, they, that looks good. I was waiting for that and they click on things, right? So how do we manage that? How do we handle that? And how do we, and the environment has been since I've been here that, you know, people make mistakes. So don't compound it by not reporting it. And people do, they'll, they'll report it. Oh, geez, you know? So we remediate it. We, we, we work with our vendors to make sure there's no, there's no, no damage done, there's no malware, there's no rootkits, none of that stuff. And, and then the person, you know, has to do remedial or s- security training. You get refresh, I should say, not remedial. Um, and, and that's, that's always a challenge because the human element is, is all, is frequently a target, right? Social engineering and phishing, spear phishing, and they, they've had things, I've seen them come through where it'll be, it'll look just like it came from Greg's email. You know, sign this. I know it's something to be effective. I know we don't usually do this, but, um, you know, wire this money to this account right away. You know, and that'll go through and it looks, and, and it looks like it's coming from him, you know, and they're getting better and better. And, and so that's always a challenge and the opportunity is for us to develop our skills and, uh, and to continue to protect the environment the best that we can. Another opportunity, we talked about briefly, is to change our operational, our CIS platform to something that is more, that is more tightly integrated. Right now, we have, you know, kind of this bolt-on thing that, you know, it's been integrated, been added to over the years. And every add-on is another opportunity for, it's another penetration, that's another contact, that's another connection, you know, into the network or out of the network. So every time you do that, you're expanding your threat landscape, you know? So we, we try to shrink it, you know, I mean, as much as we can, so.
Maybe in the executive session.
Yeah.
It could help break down what is our IT spend, what is our OT spend and cybersecurity spend? Just, just want to get a sense of h- h- how we are looking at that. I mean, if you don't have this information today, maybe at a later date.
No, I could certainly.
Just want to get a sense of that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Do you have a question?
All right, thanks.
Okay, um, we've got procurement request. Who's, who's driving these? Beautiful.
What are we talking?
Campaign request.
Those are very straightforward.
Uh, sure, we can do that. Um, is it okay if we do the second two first and then come back to the first procurement request? Just to bring that out? Thank you. Please don't leave, just stay.
Yeah, yeah.
He's tied up too.
So, uh, this year we went out to, uh, sent out IFP, uh, twenty twenty-five dash twelve for one material handler truck, um, with trade-in and that material handler actually was an extended cab. Proposal went out to nine companies. Um, we received sale proposals from two companies, Altech Industries and James A. Kylie. Uh, we recommend, uh, purchasing one material handler truck with extended cap and trade-in from James A. Kylie. Uh, for the reasons, uh, Altech had thirteen exceptions. Uh, the Altech description states that the model year is, uh, two thousand and twenty-seven. It also states prices for equipment with production start dates twelve months and beyond, a budgetary only due to irregular costs, inflation and market volatility. And also the, uh, delivery time is a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty months. And, um, James A. Kylie was sixty to eighty months. Sorry, we, yeah, we.
Still very.
You know how many times they say that?
Um, feels like years, I know.
Yeah, it does. Actually it is. Um, so we have, uh, I, IFP twenty twenty-five dash sixteen for two material, material handler trucks.
We just do this first one, that we can both, first one, and then go to the next one. Um, does anyone want to read the motion?
I will, I will read the motion. Uh, move that the proposal IFP twenty twenty-five dash twelve for one, uh, material handler truck with trade-in extended cap to be awarded to James A. Kylie Company for four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars pursuant to Master of Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, uh, Section fifty-six D on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Yep.
Second.
Session, all those in paper?
All right.
For the bureau.
Good job, Paul.
All right, so for RMLD IFP twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, it was for two material handler trucks with trade-ins. The proposal went out to nine companies and we only received one sale proposal back from James A. Kylie Company.
Was there any feedback from any of the others? And why didn't you respond?
I don't know why, we don't know why Altech didn't put in part, but they put, only put in for the one.
What about the other seven? No.
We didn't get anything, didn't hear any information either.
Okay, just a quick question on the two trade-ins, and in the past we've put those up for auction. Why are we, why, why traded in versus auction?
This is the way they've always done it. I believe they have like a wholesaler that comes and they look at them and buy them and it's part of, they work with James A. Kylie.
Okay.
I can find out more information for you, I.
You don't have to do that. I just thought I'd ask you that, you know, because I know in the past we've had surplus and we have a way to bring them out to auction and get, do it, you know, do a direct sale and get whatever top dollar and then do the purchase directly. Presumably, you know, you get less at the trade-in at the dealer if he sells it.
Didn't that create a whole issue?
Opposite, no, it was the opposite.
I don't, I thought it was sold, I.
No, no, well, those ones you're talking about, we ended up getting twenty-seven grand for them. Yeah, because we started doing a better, more robust auction of surplus and got twenty-seven grand. You're talking about before that.
Correct.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I've. Ready for the vote, ready for the vote.
Would you read the motion?
I would love to do that. Move that proposal IFP twenty twenty-five sixteen for two material handler trucks with trade-ins be awarded to James Kylie Company for eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. So it's MGL one sixty-four, fifty-sixty on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second. Favor?
You for two. So.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Trying to let people go.
Uh, so I think we mentioned this, we sent out the RFP in June. We sent out to fifteen companies, including E and E, actually. We verified every company's contact and information, so I was hoping to get more proposals to compare about having the vendor for the program, they have done a great job. But we did make a big change to the structure of the program in terms of vendor service. In the past contract, the vendor will get paid as long as you hit one customer. So we have to pay them thousands of dollars a month if you just hit one customer. So the new structure of the program is, it's most, the majority of the services based on each customer that is served. So there are a few steps in participating in the program. There's pre-program consultation and, and, you know, site visit and whatnot, most of it is virtual visit. And there's like, you know, the program like application verification and, and, you know, pre-installation, like, you know, the installation process like to help the customer and contractor to, you know, work together. There's post-installation verification, quality assurance and all that. So all these three major components are, we are asking for a per customer price. And then there are some general service, but for example, if we need a very kind of technical specific educational event or webinar or something like that, we ask them to give us a flat price proposal. And then there's also the program management piece of it, of, you know, they run a platform for all the clients that they work with. And then it's kind of a taken that we do need to kind of contribute some of that program management fee. So we ask for a flat fee for that piece. So we, in, in the end, we just got one proposal from ABOD. They did come in really high, I did the negotiation with them and they were very cooperative because I explained the rationale of why we're changing the structure of the program. So they were willing to cut up their proposal pricing, so this is what we get right now. We, as I said, they have, they have done a really good job, very supportive of our program. And for them, we are also probably one of the biggest clients in this, in this area. So I think it's a mutually beneficial relationship.
How much did you save?
Should I say it in public?
Sure.
Oh, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Welcome.
Thank you.
But, just to, just to, who was our previous vendor?
A boat.
It was a boat, before this contract. One of the things I heard from E and E during their presentation, they did not seem aware of the RFP. But you're saying, I heard, if I.
The assessment, it wasn't the heat pump and weatherization.
Okay, so that's different.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just specifically.
Sitting here, right, we just sent to him directly, the RFP.
Was there any feedback on why?
They just don't do that. I mean, the heat pump, the weatherization, it's, it's, yeah, right.
But, but does, doesn't M-WIC do that service? And we're a member of M-WIC.
I think both E and M-WIC, they do the processing of rebates. They don't necessarily provide that technical advice of like, okay, your weatherization and what, you know, do you sell us? Or is some other material and, you know, what, what does it mean involved to, you know, the different steps of doing this project? I don't think either organizations actually provide that. But they do the process which we do internally. We have a specialist team that actually process the rebates for the most part. E and E does manage our solar rebate right now. That contract is ending by the end of this year. You know, we consider what, what to do going forward.
Is, is there any relationship, if someone's putting in a heat pump, it seems like that would make them more advantageous to do solar? Is there a rollover, a recommendation on, on that or?
We are not targeting that way yet because we already added a weatherization requirement to the new heat pump program. It's already quite, quite a bit more involvement for the customer. Yeah, we have not done that.
And a question, is, is the service from Reading Light a heat pump and weatherization combined? It is not weatherization period because?
Yes.
What's, what's the expected volume of participation that we would need over three years in order to?
In order to.
So it's, it's an average monthly cost, so the contract's six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, right?
Uh, estimate of two hundred.
Per year?
Per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
How many have we had to date?
Uh, today, so the new program started in March. And, you know, for this year, we also have some kind of carryover from last year. So far it's over a hundred.
Okay.
And we have forty to fifty new participants in the pipeline with a boat. So not all fifty is going to go through, you know, at some point they would decide, oh, no, I don't want to do this. So they drop off.
Okay. And, and, and is it, so this is a budget, not?
Yeah, it's a budget, it's the upper limit, I'm not.
Okay. So they don't, so if we only get X amount of customers per month, we only pay?
Yeah, yeah, that's the name, I wanted to change the structure of the.
Yes, thank you, I, I just, we're clarifying that.
I think we have to read the motion, he wants to take us out.
There, there was a question here, one of you had a question.
I think you kind of explained, my question was when you, the word weatherization.
Yeah.
It's not somebody who already has a heat pump and you guys, not you guys, but a vendor will come out and weatherize that?
No, we want, yeah, want to do the other, we've actually specified in the program that you need to consider the results, the efficiency gains from weatherization, will you size your heat pump? It's, it's, it's not always like, okay, you know, there's a one-to-one switch of, oh, if you save five percent, then you can lower your size by five percent because the size of the heat pump is, is step change. But the goal is like, you weatherize, so you make the house more efficient first, then you install heat pump.
That's going to be a smaller one.
Hopefully, yes.
Yeah, mass save is like that, if you want the rebate on your heat pump, you need to have done a mass save audit and implemented the changes recommended before you get the credit for your heat pump and that mimics that. And, and yeah, obviously if your, your house leaks, your heat pump's not going to be that effective. Well, your oil heat's going to not be defective either, but we want to have the lowest power demand for the, for the power we deliver.
And I'll display my argument, so there's the weatherization piece that gets done before the, the heat pump. Does, does anybody from our organization or boat audit to make sure that they put that weather stripping around the windows? Like they said they were going and they sealed everything up?
Right, so actually there's a caveat to that, uh, based on a bold experience. It's, it doesn't happen all the time, every single time of whether it should happen before. But we want the design and estimate to happen at the same time so that the heat pump design would be based on the energy efficiency gains. So sometimes physically the, I, we can have a boat explain more, but basically what it means is they may have to do their heat pump installation before they do weatherization. It, it involves like the different steps of you opening up something and then close something and then, so you have to, you have to do, maybe you have to do installation before you do weatherization, but our requirement is these two have, have to be done in conjunction. That's.
Should we check to see that it was?
Yes, they have, they.
A boat does.
A boat, uh, we, we asked a boat, asked the contractor to send over proof of, like for weatherization, there's a before and after.
Oh, okay.
And there's a whole rap form where they have to fill out exactly all the different pieces that they did because they are not all different, some houses you only do the, the, the attic or only do the walls or, or you target the most helpful ones and, you know. So that they are different, so that's why there's a.
Following on Paul's question, when I did mass saves, a few weeks later, somebody came out, completely different person inspecting to make sure the contractor had done it exactly the way, in that case, National Grid had paid for it. And so it was a different guy with a different set of glasses on, making sure, scrutinizing it. But we, you're saying, if we rely on our representation, but there's not somebody going out that's independent?
Yeah, I think the current practice is unless there's a, they, when they see those proof or, and photos, when they see problems, they will go do an in-person visit. Right now, it's, it's virtual review first. But then in the contract, in our, our RFP, it does specify like there are issues. And in their proposal, if there are issues, they will do in person.
How many a year are we doing or how many a month? About ten, something, twenty?
Of weatherization?
Yeah, yeah.
Of, or the project?
We guess, any, twenty?
Right, I mean, so we, so two hundred a year, that's about twenty. Yeah.
Because I know a lot of them, you were having an issue where guys were, contractors were sizing, they weren't, they were, you kind of checked a box, no, they don't want that weatherization. And now you're fixing that.
Yes, we are, we are requiring that, if you want to get a rebate, you have to do it. Unless you prove that, you also show the proof that it has already been done, like in prior times, whatever. Or the house was built in later years where weatherization, there's no opportunity for weather.
I just think inspection is, I found that it's a good idea, yes, trust but verify, right?
Oh, exactly, I think that's why we are willing to pay someone like a boat to verify, to do quality.
Somebody goes out and looks. No.
We, yeah, it's more costly, so I think it's a balance, so, yeah.
Early discussion? Okay, does somebody, Ray, would you?
I would love to. Move that the RFP twenty twenty-five dash seventeen for heat pump and home weatherization rebate program support services be awarded to ABOD Energy Management LLC as a responsive and responsible proposer, proposer offering the most advantageous proposal for the estimated average monthly cost of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents over the next three years or a total estimated three-year cost of six hundred to three thousand dollars and six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second. All those in paper? Zero?
When again, Paul?
And the, the Tony Award on the motion reading of the night. Okay, all right, we're moving on to scheduling and then I see something here about possible September twenty-fourth.
Yes, so that is just because we have a bid that needs to get approved and it won't be ready for September seventeenth, but it would be ready for September twenty-fourth.
Okay, if, if we do need to change that, it is likely that I would not be there. In a flight at the meeting time, so. Bye, bye, get approved, take over.
September twenty-fourth, I will not be here. I will, I am out of town that week.
You're also out of town.
I'm out of town that entire week.
Oh my. That's.
That way. Sounds like.
We don't even know.
It may be difficult.
Yeah. What about the first week in October?
October first is fine with me.
I might be out of town, but I, I might be, I might be back for that. Hence my flights, I can't remember.
Even if you want to do the full meeting on the seventeenth and then we can have a quick virtual, you know, just get three people to approve that, that needs to be, we can also do that.
Have fun, folks.
I'm, I'm fine with that if we get someone in to explain it to us while we're all together, so here's what we put out and what we're asking for, even if we don't have a final decision on it, so that we're briefed on it.
I think we would be briefed on it in the, in the short meeting, like in the second meeting, right?
I'm saying on the seventeenth, we could be briefed on it, saying we're waiting for the final, this is what we want and we can all talk about it. And then when the price comes in and decision's made, then I could see three people sign off on it.
Offline or in?
Virtually, virtually have a quorum, sign off on it if we're all briefed. So on the seventeenth.
I see, I see what you're proposing, I'm just wondering what's. We're going to have a virtual meeting anyway, why not just brief and vote in the virtual meeting?
We may not, we may have barely a quorum, so two of the three may not.
We haven't had that virtual meeting yet, are you talking about?
If, if we find a virtual meeting time where we get most people there, you're right, no special briefing is necessary. If, if we're just trying to find three people who can answer the phone, then I would like to hear from other members preliminarily, preliminarily. So that whoever signs off on it understands the interest or feedback or gets the comments, what that's the term is.
What I also could do is I can circle back with purchasing, get a little more detail on what the bid is, how complicated, et cetera, and then I can follow up on scheduling a second meeting if needed.
Okay, so if we feel like we're not going to have everybody at that virtual, or at least four of the five at the virtual, then we can, we can go through that, okay? So we'll keep it to seventeen and then we'll target a short. Any other discussion on any of the other dates?
Oh, just October twenty-second, one in Lynnfield or North Reading, right now, probably going to have the target North Reading, unless we get a Lynnfield Draplin.
Maybe that's part of our recruiting plan. Put out snacks, fight town people.
That's about, I know we've had it at the Winfield Town Hall in the past on construction. That might also not, if they're trapped by a ghost or else.
Not threatening sunscreen.
Marketplace.
It's not the territory.
Okay, so it's North Reading? Yeah.
I think it's been a while.
I think you're at four.
Okay.
Uh, and then I think our November date is wrong. Thursday would be November thirteenth. Are we, are we doing Thursday? So I, I thought I had Wednesday, November twelfth on my schedule.
So yeah, fourteenth and nineteenth. Wonder why we just fourteen?
Uh, well, the fourteenth is a Friday. I have on my calendar that we had planned for November twelfth.
Yeah, twelfth day.
That's probably a day.
Twelfth and nineteenth also, like I had nineteenth on my calendar.
And the nineteenth?
I had nineteen.
November twelfth's preliminary in case we need it for the budget, but nineteenth is the actual meeting.
Nineteenth is the actual meeting.
Okay, you're right.
So twelfth is a potential budget.
Okay, and then the seventeenth. Okay, and then it's up to you. Okay, um, anything on more at the schedule, any other questions?
Just just one little cleanup, I I realized when we did that ratification vote, I never actually read those hate words that we were adding or proposing to add if. Paul's okay with it, if I could just do that now to. Just that that.
Can you follow up?
I don't know if it's, because I didn't read it into the motion, that the additional language was. Referred to in the ratification motion was after the word courts in the second paragraph. We would add it, and where consistent comma, the applicable provisions of the Redding Town Charter and R M L D policies, comma. And then it goes on, so that's that's what that referred to, is there any need to, can we just?
We we saw it on the slide, so I understood that.
I know, but it's just, I don't know if anybody, the motion language needs to be in the motion language, but if we get all this.
I think it's fine, we.
Okay, bye. Okay, I don't know what the lawyers, I I don't know what the lawyers are gonna say, you know, it wasn't read out, so it's doesn't, that's all, but. Thank you, and and Paul, you're free to say, go pound sand.
I would never say that. Much more gentle than that.
Thank you for, thank you for. Thanks for your.
You've heard me at meetings before, David.
Okay, you're you're shy and retiring.
Yes, yeah. Shy, retiring, wow, wow, that'd be big.
Alright, one trying to get Paul on the road before midnight.
I know, Paul's like, why did I do this?
We have somebody move us into executive session, please.
Oh, right, executive session, forgot about that.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, let's go, who wants to read it?
I'll do it. Okay, uh, move that the R M L D board of commissioners go into executive session pursuant to M G L's one sixty four, section forty seven D. Exempt from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances under purpose for to discuss the deployment or or strategy regarding R M L D cybersecurity and return to regular session. For the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All of favor?
Okay, we we can also do the same thing, so.
Move that the R M L D citizens advisory board go into executive session pursuant to master general law one sixty four, section forty seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances under purpose for to discuss the deployment and strategy. Guiding R M L D cybersecurity return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I'm in favor. Aye, really excellent, thank you.
Okay, we'll move into executive session.